Go ahead and start. We have YouTube running now. Can't start without that. So, welcome to Alpine City Planning Commission for May 2nd, 2023. From the Planning Commission, we have Troy Slade with us. Ethan Allen will be joining us a little bit late. John McKay. Alan McDonald is on Zoom and joining us from California. Suze Wittenberg and Jeff Davis and myself, Jane Greiner. And then from city, we have Ryan Robinson, the city planner, stuff, everything that they need at the city. We don't have Heidi here today. You're being Heidi too?
I guess.
Okay, and then we have Marla Fox, who's recording in the other room. And then online, we have Jed Muehlstein, the city engineer. So, welcome to everyone. And we will go ahead and get started. Glass is back on. And we will have an opening prayer by Troy Slade, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are thankful to be gathered together here this evening to conduct some city business. We pray that we can be able to be guided and directed and do the things that will be best for the city and the citizens in it, and make wise decisions and have a good conversation. And thankful to live in this beautiful area, beautiful place. And these prayers and blessings, we ask we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so to start with, we actually have something on the reports and presentations tonight. There was a request to have the Trails Committee come and field a few questions and make any comments that they want to and update. So, if you want to come up to the podium, we have, from the Trails Committee here, say your name and address.
Shelley Butterfield, 1360 Grove Drive.
All right, thanks. We have Shelley here. And she's on the Trails Committee representing the equestrian particularly.
Yes.
Interests, because they have been, had long interest in that, their family involvement in it. We also have from the Trails Committee Will Jones and Breezy Anson. I said Anson, Breezy almost, I'm sorry. Breezy Anson with us too, if you have any other questions. So, did you have something you wanted to present first, or did you want to just field questions?
I, yeah, we can just field questions.
Okay, let's just start with that. So, there were a few people who had questions last week and wanted to be able to find out what's happening with some of the issues. So, Alan, do you want to take this chance to ask your questions? He's on Zoom.
Sure thing, sure thing, and I'll be brief. And again, thank you for coming. The request for communication really was just to discuss with the Trail Committees, the members of the Trail Committee, what efforts were going to be put in place this year, particularly since we've had so much moisture and such a wet winter to prevent too much use too early, both by bicyclists, you know, mountain bikers, but particularly horseback riders, equestrians. Because, again, the ground is so soft, and we've seen over the last couple of years, significant and lasting damage done to the trails that have been built with so much effort and so much expense. And there really just is, particularly when the ground is moist, outsized damage done to it by equestrians and horseback use. So, the request for communication was to the Trails Committee, just what can we do via signage and education, particularly to the equestrian community, you know, to not utilize those trails too early and in such a way that does such lasting damage to them?
Well, efforts that we've made so far is signage. We have not chained anything off. We've talked about that in different meetings. We haven't done that, you know, to chain off trails, especially, I guess, is it our north, our north side that's the most muddy? That's something that we could add, but the trail that was damaged this year has, you know, a no horses sign that is giant and bright red. And we even felt a little rude putting it up. It is so.
Because it was so loud.
It's so loud, yeah. It almost, you know, Trent said, I felt bad taking this up there. Yes, right, like I'm screaming at anybody who's riding a horse. And yet, we still had somebody ride their horse on it on a muddy day. Now, do you guys know if they were uphill or downhill tracks? Okay, so down. Are our signs as well marked going down the hill?
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They were almost knocked off their horse by the sign.
By the sign, okay, okay. So, this is somebody who, we don't know who it was. My guess is this is somebody who's been riding Alpine Trails for years, you know.
Or that sign was put there.
I fall in that category, yeah. You know, somebody who's probably been riding out there for 25 or 30 years, and they made a loop. And Easy Breezy is relatively new. How old is that one? Two years? Yeah, it's kind of new, and they probably thought, well, wait a second. I always came down this little draw and just went right past the no horses sign. And, you know, it looks like the Kentucky Derby went through. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how to answer that for somebody who just went past a very well-signed area on their horses. And especially that, you know, the way they're going up Three Falls and then coming down. That's someplace that we wouldn't chain. We wouldn't put a chain anyway. We'd be putting a chain at the bottom of Stony Way, where that little parking lot is, so that you don't go up it. But we would, we're probably not going to haul up there because it would, you know, it'd be damaging to be up there on your bike. It wouldn't matter. It wouldn't have mattered that day whether it was a bike or, I mean, horses.
Any use.
Yeah, any use would have been damaging a horse's worse, because they weigh a thousand pounds.
And it really relies on self-patrolling. We don't really have any options for patrolling. I mean, I suppose we could put in some camera with, what's it called when the sun goes into energy?
Solar.
Thank you. It is way too. A solar panel with, you know, with a camera or something, but you know, do we really want to go there?
Are we going to chase down somebody?
Yeah, exactly. Whose hat does that look like, you know? So, that's a challenge. Alan, follow-up question?
Well, I would just say that, I mean, unfortunately, it always is the one or two bad apples that ruins the whole bushel. And again, just the weight of a horse. And look, I've been mountain biking up there for years. I really dislike it when riders get up there too early as well. I suppose the difference is, when it's that muddy, you really just can hardly even ride because your tires are just so gummed up. A horse is a little bit different. And I mean, if there, it just seems to me that eventually if, if there is just one or two or group of riders that really don't care what the signs say, then I don't know how you finally come to the conclusion that, you know, maybe up until, you know, the end of June or something, horses are just prohibited. And we institute a significant fine, to the point where, you know, if somebody sees an equestrian up there before a certain date, there's going to be a significant fine levied, and, you know, you call enforcement. And maybe there's an officer waiting at the bottom of the trailhead. I don't know the answer, but when you've done everything you can to sign it and let people be aware, and there's still somebody, you know, one or two people are just going to do it anyway, other than just, just start imposing significant fines and enforcement, I don't know what else you do. I think that's unfortunate. But again, the damage is so outsized that can be caused. And again, it's, when you said it looks like Kentucky, the Kentucky Derby rode through there, I mean, that's, that's exactly what it can look like. And it's just unfortunate that.
Yeah, it is unfortunate.
More class of users could possibly be end up, you know, prohibited because, you know, one or two folks will not, you know, obey the signage for the greater good.
Well, I don't think we're anywhere near that prohibiting horses.
No.
I, we've discussed this at length in the trail meetings. And I don't think we're anywhere near being that prescriptive on you can't ride until the end of June, because right now, I could take my horses out. I just got shoes on them, and I could probably ride them really just about anywhere in Alpine. And not, not on a no horse trail, of course, but stuff's dry now. It's pretty dry. And I'm going to feel, you know, like, what? I can't ride my horse till the end of June? Yeah, come on.
Let me just ask a quick question.
So, you know, and if it rains in July, and we get muddy, and we have somebody who's riding on a rainy day, we're going to be in the same place.
That's what I was wondering, is if it would be more feasible to have park closed days if it's super, super muddy, where it's just a, this is a park closed day. And, you know, because like you said, if there was torrential rains in July, could it be, you know, closed? I mean, I don't know.
Well, there are signs all over that say, don't ride the trails when it's muddy. And Alpine was founded on kids riding their horses up and down Grove Drive. And the rodeo used to be something where kids brought their horses, and the events were eggs in spoons. So, to just hammer on the equestrian community, because we've got a lot of mountain bikers now, I don't think that's addressing all the use that our trails get.
Okay, that's true, but these trails that exist now did not exist 10 and 15 and 20 years ago. And so, maybe these trails that are used by the mountain bikers should be, you know, should be prohibited use for the horses. Because, you know, again, they, the horses put such deep, deep marks and just damaged them so badly that they erode. And, you know, and parts of them are almost just even unusable until they're finally evened out again.
Well, we do have quite a few trails, a good half a dozen trails, that are no equestrian, am I right, about on that number? A half a dozen or so that say no horses. All the new downhill stuff is no horses.
Breezy, state your name and pull your microphone over there.
Breezy Anson Pine, Pine Valley Realty, 633 Wilderness Drive. So, last year, we actually suggested to close all the trails in the North Mountain to equestrians from October until May. And this was done before May. We don't have signs. We've had signs made. I think having signs of when the trail is closed to horses at the trailhead, because people will use either trailer their horses to the trailhead parking, or they will ride their horse to the trailhead parking and go up. So, getting the signs in the trailheads before.
That's an additional step that hasn't been done yet.
However, when we brought it to the council, they turned it down. And they said, we wanted to have a little bit more information on doing a trail-only, horse, a horse-only pedestrian trail around Lambert Park. And so, it, I don't think it got approved to be closed. They were waiting for something, and really, our recommendation was to do it immediately. I mean, it was literally do it immediately before the October season, before the, this next season. So, I think that would help if we can get that imposed, at least on that North Mountain, because that's where we get it the worst. It's clay, Lambert Park's really rocky, and the water just drains. Now, to answer your question about July, if it has a heavy rain in July, it's across the board. If it's muddy, we don't use it. We don't use it. But July, it dries off in a couple of days, where in the springtime, it's going to go weeks. And people are chomping at the bit to get out and ride the horse.
For sure.
But if we can train them and say, hey, we have Lambert Park. I think we can get a really good trail system connected to the rodeo ground. And there's a section of trees that we can go just to the east of the rodeo ground. And it could be a nice, could be a nice equestrian loop. People could park at the rodeo ground, go do a Lambert Park route. That would include the service roads and some of the other stuff. If we can get the Wilderness Forest Service involved and go up where the shooting ranges.
Is, are the trail, are the signs for the trailheads, is that in, already in place now? Or is that just something that's in motion?
In motion.
In motion?
A lot of the.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and tell us the status.
I've been working on the signs this winter. That's in motion. All the posts went in on Saturday. So, we're just wait, wait in all the parking lots. There are big plates, and, you know, where it's a no horse sign, there's a little no horse, you know, icon there.
Well, it sounds like everybody's aware of the issue.
Away from, from getting all of our material and it being installed.
Agreed.
Which we have not had much signage.
Yeah, so it sounds like everyone's aware of the issue, and you have some plans in place to mitigate the problem with education, short of, like you said, posing fines. Do we have fines set for abusers or anything yet?
We don't, not to my own.
So, right, so, city council, if you guys might want to take it back to city council then, and as another proposal of any prohibiting times or something, because if there's no times that are prohibited, then you can't enforce, you can't enforce a fine. And the judgment of muddy or not muddy or whatever, you know, is going to be one of those hard things to do. So, I mean, Alan, do you have any more questions? It sounds like they hear your concerns, and they've been trying to address and are continuing to address them with options. Jeff Davis has a comment, and then Alan.
Two questions.
No, I have nothing further.
Okay.
Do we have, I mean, I would hate to like just prohibit horses for like half the year. Do we have evidence that once the ground is frozen, you know, December through March, do we have evidence that horses on the north side or anywhere else damages the trails?
Or do they even want to take horses during that time?
Yeah, you know, I think most, I don't like breezy's October at all, because I'm riding, I know. Yeah.
Okay, so it's just not good in the wintertime to ride horses?
Not very many people go out, because you take the shoes off your horses. You can't ride in with your shoe, with shoes on. It's so slippery and icy. It's really dangerous. And I don't think we get much use at all in the winter. I think that's a pretty rare thing that somebody takes a winter ride. If they do, they're on the oiled road.
And then, I guess my other comment would be on these signs, if they haven't been made. And I don't know the process that we had to go through, Ryan, but I would suggest coming up with a fine process. And on the sign, say, possible fine of blank.
Yeah.
Because the reality is, is the city has invested upwards of, I don't know, 100,000.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars on trails.
And so, so we want to be protective of that. We want everybody to have access. But if we go the route of implementing, noticing to the users, hey, bikers, horses, you know, don't use these possible fines of whatever.
Well, especially the situation on Easy Breezy, where it is so.
So, just include that language on the sign.
Right around it, and then that kind of goes down in a little draw, right?
Yeah, just include that, that language on the sign, but I don't know the process that we have to go through.
Right.
If we just can put that arbitrarily on there when we don't have it in the city code.
Did anybody see that group? So, so there, we would have to, I guess, have our solar camera and then a detective to try to figure out which horse it was.
Not a big fan of that, but we ought to, we ought to have in place.
But I think that's a great thing to have on the sign.
And it depends on how expensive it is. If you have $50,000 of repair, a camera might be a great idea, you know what I mean?
Well, in other cities, you know, you don't ride your bike in Draper when it is muddy. It is so patrolled. You will get a ticket, but we don't. Their policemen are out there.
One thing we could do is we could patrol the parking lots during the wet season and even get license plates or something like that. There are ways of doing it without seeing the person.
Draper is a good example of limiting access on the bikes.
For everyone.
For everyone.
Everyone.
They're really good. I mean, they close off the trails.
Do they close the trailhead?
I think they have just so much more infrastructure and manpower and dollars to spend than Alpine does.
But may, but maybe just putting the language, and again, I don't know the protocol. It seems kind of silly to put language on when we don't have something actually.
You'd have to pass something first.
Something that was written, that was saying, okay, here is a fine.
Yeah.
But we, we have language in our code that deals with nuisances, so it's.
You could put it under that.
Probably fall under a nuisance.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my recommendation is that for the trails, and, you know, and I think we could just do a blanket, all, all trails within, you know, Alpine.
Well, and the fines should be imposed on a mountain biker.
Absolutely.
If they are coming down Easy Breezy, and the mud is a foot deep.
I agree.
Yep.
Yeah, so the language should be mud. You ride on our trails in the mud, you're going to get a ticket. Which is what Draper does. That's how.
And that's what Draper does.
Yeah.
Okay. Suze has a comment.
Question, Shelley. How many, it's really impossible to know this, but you have your people who trail to, you know, they trail their horses. It's a little bit of effort for people to get their horses together with. So, what Breezy said, having that already, they know that if it's going to be muddy, don't go. So, do you think that these people are usually, are probably locals, just are riding from home to have access to the trails? Because if you trail your horse all the way down, you've got the day set aside, you're probably going to ride.
Yeah, if you have brought your trailer up, and you've come across Three Falls, and you get to that place, and you know that where you are going to go is down, you don't care.
I know.
Which is too bad. And the other thing, I guess, to mention is, and this is my own personal experience. You know, I've been riding deer trails on my horses for 25 years. And many of those little deer trails and little places that you could take a horse, we have turned them into mountain biking trails. And we decommissioned every other little trail around. So, you can't quite get around the same way you could 10 or 15 years ago.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's the thing. You accessed it from like Mahogany, or not Mahogany, the Hemagon Trailhead.
Yes.
So, we'd ride, we'd ride the, it was basically service road.
Yeah, you rode a lot on roads, and now we have all these trails.
Right. Well, I think that was great, great input, great ideas. I know Shelley doesn't have a ton of time and needs to go. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, just that I think this will be a continual process. And, you know.
We would love to hear any updates on it. We would love to hear any action items that get taken back. Obviously, you already have some in place, and so I think that would be great.
And I think we are going to probably be at a place, Breezy and Will, you can, yes or no, where we're going to need to spend some money on kind of connect, doing some little fixes, connecting our equestrian trails better.
So, they have a place to go.
People have been cut off.
Yeah.
You know, you used to be able to go sideways all the way across Lambert, and now you can't, because we've got all this downhill stuff.
Right.
So.
They need to, Trails Committee is, got something.
It's going to take some time and some money. Yeah.
Some money and working with the National Forest Service perhaps, or whoever it is that we need to work with, but.
Which we're kind of already on that, right, Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a part of the heritage of Alpine. It definitely doesn't want to get, we don't want to get lost. And, you know, one of the main purposes of these multi-use trails was to accommodate multi-use.
Yeah, and when I was first asked to be on this committee and then asked to do the equestrian, I just started talking to every equestrian, every horse owner that I knew in town. And that is certainly just a fraction of them. But everyone kind of had the same answer. It was like, yeah, I really don't like to ride up there much anymore. The mountain bikers don't slow down. They run me over and.
Do we have a Facebook page for Lambert Park? Okay, I was just wondering if there's a place people go for updates, like daily updates, trails are muddy. I mean, that could be something, that could be something that could be worked on is current conditions or part of the city, part of the city page.
Part of the city page, a little article just saying, hey, let's remember.
And even status updates. You know how you get the fishing? I know all about the fishing status updates for my husband, you know? What's hatching on this part of the Provo River today or whatever? What are the conditions? How high is it? How low is it? I mean, you could have something like that with the, with the trails, like what is the condition of the trails? You know, today's a don't ride day, you know, unofficial. And then that community where you said, everyone who has a horse, you kind of all are connected, really. And that culture has to get created within that community to where people feel loyal to each other and stick together on it, which I think they already do. Like you said, there's an outlier here and there. Maybe that can round it together.
So, we do have a city Facebook page that we revamped and we're using a lot more. It might be helpful instead of creating a whole new.
Right, that's what I mean. Just use that, yeah.
Yeah.
And the city website too.
Establishing that culture, throw in those bikers, because those big fat tires are so bad.
Yeah, yeah, it's got to be a culture for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. The no mud thing has got, that just is for all. That is all.
Yep.
So, and just to heads up, Jed just texted me and said the signs for the trails are done. So, he said any changes that we made would have to be next round.
Okay.
He said those will be about.
Well, the maps or the metal signs?
He just said the signs are done.
Probably for the parking lots.
I don't think, I don't think the maps are done. I think the signs are though.
You'd have to, if you want a fine, you could get one of those little rectangular ones that go down below it on the same post. So, if they can get that, then we can add to that signage, so.
And that might even be better.
It might.
So, and he says, he said next round, we could make these changes on there. He said that'll be about $3,000. But he says if a horse can cause, or a bike or one can cause, you know, $30,000 worth of damage, it might be worth it.
Exactly, that's my point, is the damage is more expensive than the.
Is he talking about the metal plate signs that are going on the six-by-six posts or different signs?
He's on here. I guess I could let him talk.
Jed, do you want to answer? Are you, are you talking about the metal signs?
Yeah, I'm talking about the main big kiosk signs, not the individual.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
I would, I would think adding something on the trailhead signs.
Yeah, well, that could be added on. It could be added under the kiosk signs.
Any trail right now that is no horse has the little no horse thing.
Yeah.
But I think what we're talking about, Alan, too, with you, your comments is, it's really a mud thing.
Yeah.
We need to figure out how to get people off our trails in the mud.
Yep.
I agree.
No matter what they're doing, walking even, biking or riding a horse. We need to figure out what Draper's doing and figure out if there's any way we can mimic it.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for your time. Yep, come on up. Okay, Will Jones has a public comment he would like to add.
Seven Elk Court. Reason I want to mention something, we had Trail Day on Saturday. And over the years, we've wondered about how this goes. And I've been in it so long that we were, three or four of us, we would go out on Trail Day, and we'd do a few prunings. Saturday, we had over 100 people that were there, and it was an amazing group. And the reason I want to bring it up is, that was so positive and so incredible. But unfortunately, there's one little thing in it that's not, and that is, the teams are who are showing up. It's the biking teams. The group that we said, don't use our trails. You're overusing our trails. Oh, wait a minute. We don't want you riding our trails. You do too. Well, guess what? We had 10 citizens that weren't involved with the biking trail. And the rest came from the biking trails, through their parents, through the kids. So, when you see the biking kids on it, thank them. Tell them, we appreciate you coming. I mean, if you'd seen these kids, two hours, three hours, Breezy had the group with him that was there for four hours. And it was hard work, and these kids did a great job. So, my only point is, you know, sometimes the group that we think shouldn't be using is doing the most to make it so that we can use it, so.
All right, thank you.
Put that out there.
Okay, all right, let's move forward. From presentations to action item number one.
So, that one's me. So, this was a code text amendment proposal that came, that we got the application to come through to add multi-use buildings as a conditional use in the business commercial zone. So, this will only apply to business commercial zone, or zoned properties in the business commercial zone. This will only apply to them. What this, what this would do, if I can scroll down here.
Could you mention who put this on the agenda?
Yeah, so James Lawrence is here. James and his wife, Lacy, are here. And I can show you, so they, they requested to, this code text amendment to allow multi-use buildings, right? Nobody just does this out of, you know, for fun, right? James, I don't know if this has been fun, but.
Right, so he has a use condition he would like to use, so.
Just to show this, that's weird, it's not highlighted like it was before. Let's see, where's your property, James? So, this is. Sorry, James Lawrence, Jim Jensen. Yep, yep, so this is, if you can see my, I'm not going to try to annotate. If you can see the cursor there, there's a square property right here.
That's behind the.
Yes. So, it's behind a house right now. It's just north of, if you can see right here, this is, this is James' shop, this is Lynx and Kings', and then this is the property that James owns. Well, James owns both, but.
There's a home, and then there's this lot behind it.
Yep, yep. So, this is the property. Yep, yep. So this is the property that, that, uh, they're considering that they would like to put a, a shop on, not a shop, some kind of, a, a building on, structure on. Uh, bottom would be for commercial use, uh, and then upstairs would have a, an apartment, uh, addition to it. So right now in our code, you can have, you can have a commercial and residential on the same lot, but they have to be, um, you have to meet the setbacks for both as if they were the main building. So this makes it hard to, to do that. And then for an accessory apartment, which we have in our code, it requires it to be owner occupied. So, uh, a good example of this is the Lynx and Kings building, or the, the one behind it, it's owner occupied, uh, commercial in the front, they've got residential there, uh, that's how that works.
They met all the setbacks though, and they're separate buildings.
Yep, yep, separate buildings like that. Um, another example is the Ezra Lee Building, um, the one.
The apartment upstairs.
Yeah, yeah. So that one, and I obviously wasn't here, that was two thousand fifteen, um, in, in conversations with Jed and Shane and some others that were here. Uh, that was, that was presented to the city as if it would not be rented out. It was, it was for, for the owners' personal use there. So we do have some examples of, of kinda similar ones that have done that. To, to do this though, for, to make this change, um, this would allow, like you said, a, a building, you could have. It'd have to be an approved use, permitted or conditional, um, in our, in our zone for the commercial side of it. This would allow us to, uh, to put an apartment up above it, someone, uh, to put an apartment up above it, they could rent it out without, uh, it being owner occupied, so it wouldn't have to be the owner, um, that has it. If this is, and right, and, and looking through this, if we make this change to our code, uh, we've added a couple of standards for the multipurpose, uh, proposals, uh, specifically for the residential component, right? So all of our codes that have to do with the commercial building would still have to be met, uh, and then these would be additional standards if you wanted, if you wanted commercial on there. These are the, some of the ones that we looked at, um, that we've got there. I'm gonna show you what it would look like, nope, not that one, in our code. So this is, this is, uh, the conditional use, uh, section of our code in the business commercial zone. Um, this, it would just be an added use that they would have to, have to go through there. These are some of the standards and, and additional research that we've done and looked into it, we've added some, some other ones. And these are, obviously, these are just standards or, uh, kinda launching points for a, a conversation on what we could do there. So again, this was, uh, a structure that combines two or more different uses, uh, within a single building, and then if it's a multi-use, we would require that one of the uses be a residential. And, and then the, the commercial, like I said, would be a, a conditional or permitted use listed in this zone. We would wanna limit the space. Uh, these are kinda some of the ones that we've seen that, that different communities use. We don't want it to become a, you know, you've got a, a little t-shirt shop in the front and then twenty apartment, uh, units in it as well. We don't, we wouldn't want something like that. So we would, we would have some kinda designation, whether that's a total square footage, it couldn't be, couldn't be larger than that. I've seen anywhere from a thousand to, to two thousand, um, and, and fifteen hundred was, was in there as well. And, and trying to keep it to where it's a, uh, primarily commercial use, uh, we would, uh, limit the, the, couldn't be more than half the building, um, in square footage for the, for the residential use. Uh, we'd want a separate entrance, so someone doesn't have to walk through a, you know, if you had a, a store, they wouldn't have to walk through the store at night to, to get up to the apartment. We would want to limit this to, to ma- to one, uh, maybe two dwelling units, uh, per building, just again, so we don't have, we don't have a whole, i- it's not an apartment complex that, with, with a little bit of commercial there. We did add specific language in there, um, saying that it could be rented out, uh, by the non-owner of the building, so someone that doesn't own the building, um, could live there. They would just have to fill out, we've got an accessory apartment application that they would have to go through, and, and then that renews every year. So every December, Marla sends out a, a notice saying, hey, this is, you know, if, if you're gonna rent this out still, we need, uh, we need this form filled out and, and a fee paid on that. So we, we would do that, and then again, just having language in there saying that it's a, it's a secondary use that we've, that it would be, it wouldn't be the primary use of the building. Um, but we still, we still want that commercial. And then language saying, and, and we can clean this up too as we go, but, uh, the residential part would either have to be on the second story or in the back. Again, just trying to keep that main, main use commercial.
So, so this is, this is suggested, if, if we think it's a good idea, these are the components you think would need to be in it.
Yep, and this is just based off research we've done too, and, and going through what other cities do and, and reading best practice stuffs, if there's some stuff, if there's, if there's added things you'd like to add in there, we can do that or take certain things out.
This also has the added complexity of there's already a home on the property.
Nope, so this is a separate, if you, if you look again.
No, but is this a separate piece of property? Like, how, how is that, how is that a lot by itself? Because it doesn't qualify as a lot, because it's i- it's isolated.
Yeah, so in the business commercial zone, so there's a, and, and we'll, we'll get into this more when, uh, if this is approved and they, they, they come back to, to go through the conditional use process. There is an easement, and James can talk more about that if he wants to, but, um, there is an easement to get back there in the business commercial zone, if it's a business building, that's all we require. So we, it would just have to meet the standards for police and fire.
So we allowed this to be divided, subdivided.
So this, this law was probably a, a legal non-conforming law, it was probably here before the, the standards got there, but, um.
I don't know why anybody would want a lot surrounded by all the other lots. Why we did that, why would we do that?
There's lots of that.
I know, it's so weird.
There's lots of those.
Lot of them have a street, but, yeah.
Yep, a- and so we just require access to, to a main, a main road and, and where they've got that, and then, um, yeah, there's, there's no frontage requirement in the business commercial zone. Like I said, would just need to meet the standards to get a fire, fire and police back there if needed.
Okay, um, Jeff, you have a question, and then, um, we need to have a public hearing and then we can come back and discuss it, so.
A couple of questions. Um, do we have any biz- buildings in the business commercial area now that have residents?
Yes, but the ones that I know of that are, that are legal would be owner occupied right now. So, uh, again, the Ezra Lee Building in theory should be owner occupied, um, if it is or not, we're code compliance is working on that, so.
Okay.
Um, so there's that one. Uh, I can't remember the guy named, uh, he's building the gym on Main Street there. The house next to it, uh, the top is a, a salon and, and they're living in the bottom, is, is from what I've been told.
And then the second question is, um, is there any reason to limit the residence portion to fifteen hundred square feet or any, any limit?
Yeah, so we, we would just wanna make sure that the, the main primary use is commercial.
Okay.
Um, especially where it's in our commercial zone and we have so few of it, we would just wanna make sure that it's not, like I said, they're not gonna have like little t-shirt store at the bottom and then a, a, a massive apartment or a home up there that. They could do that. So we're just trying to really preserve that.
But if they wanted to put a home there, they could.
Yep.
That's what Ezra Lee did.
Uh, in.
Or not Ezra Lee, but, well, whose is behind Lynx and Kings?
Yeah, so that's the owner that lives back there. I can't remember his name.
I can't remember his name either, but, but that's, that's actually, you guys, I, I remember it getting proposed to us and told that it was a, a legal use, was to put a home.
Yep, so you could, you could do that right now. One of the points is that you could, you could have a, a commercial and a residential on the same lot. They both would just have to meet the setbacks for a commercial and a residential individually.
Well, they could put a residential right now, if they meet all the different setbacks.
Yep.
But by having this be a mixed use, does that change the setback requirements then? Because.
No, no.
They still have to meet all the setbacks, just like if it were a home?
No, so they would just have to meet probably the setbacks for a commercial building.
Yeah, so it changes it, so that they can have different setbacks, so that they can have, if they have a business there, then they can have different setbacks.
Yeah, cause where, where it's a commercial, primarily a commercial building and where they're combined, we would probably go with the commercial, because that's the main use of it.
Right, the main use of the building is whichever one. And, and for a hair salon, you can do that in, in any, you can have an in-home business, as long as you come and get it approved anywhere.
Yep.
And so that hair salon isn't really that, a comparison, because anybody can have a hair salon in their house.
But that's just an example of having a business and residential in the same, in the same, probably the closest, a close comparison.
Okay, all right, let's open the public hearing. So, um, we're going to open the public hearing for, I don't have my notes here, hang on.
Jane?
Yes.
Another example would be the veterinarian home.
Okay, yeah, does the vet has an apartment at the back of his office, right?
I think the basement is his home.
Basement is his home, okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. If anybody has any comments and would like to come forward and, um, express any comments on this, then now would be the time to do so.
Yeah, so, so Jim Jensen is, if you wanna get up and make any, but, uh, Jim Jensen also came in on Monday, he's got a similar, um, um, idea for a, a property, this one just right across the street here.
All right, so go ahead and, and give us your, this is your chance to give us your opinion on this.
Okay, uh, my name's Jim Jensen, lived in Alpine for thirteen years, next door neighbor's Detroit South. Couple of years ago.
I'm sorry, no.
Just state the address.
Oh, yes, do give us your address, though.
Uh, we don't live in Alpine now.
Oh, you don't now, okay.
Couple of years ago, we, uh, sold everything on KSL Classifieds and went on a mission.
Oh, great. Um, do we still, do we still need their address, don't we, for public comment? Yeah.
Seven sixty-three South, eleven thirty East.
In what city?
Alpine.
Alpine, okay. All right, go ahead.
I'd say our biggest claim to fame is that one of our kids married, uh, um, one of Alpine's finest young women.
Wow, there you go.
Ethan's daughter.
That sounds like a claim to fame to me.
I didn't know, I didn't know you were part of the council.
All right, well, go ahead and.
So we're looking at, um, uh, purchasing the property kitty corner here and doing a mixed use. A mixed use building would have, uh, two residential units on the upper floor for a total of two thousand square feet, uh, or four thousand square feet, um, upstairs, two thousand square feet per residential unit. One would be for my wife and I, the other would be for somebody that I would help, have us, uh, have help us manage the commercial part of the property. Commercial part, part of the property would be about, uh, um, two thousand square feet downstairs. The back portion of it, it would be garages for the upstairs. And so, Ryan, I don't know, you know, how that's gonna fit in, in the idea of having more commercial residential. Right now, the current design is for about two thousand square feet, uh, commercial downstairs, with a total of four thousand square feet between two units upstairs. My meeting, uh, with Ryan yesterday, or whatever day it was, indicated that right now, um, it's possible for one residential unit. So I'm here to suggest that you might wanna consider more than one residential unit. One of the things I sent Ryan, and I don't know if you wanna go through this, Ryan.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got it pulled up here. I don't know, this was just kind of a, I guess you don't need to see that where they're at, but, just kind of an idea of, of what you were thinking, right?
Yeah.
Sorry if it holds still.
Yeah, that's a, a general design, we've, we've, uh, fitted that design for this lot here. Which requires some differences in order to meet setbacks, et cetera.
Okay.
But up, up in the gallery section, Ryan, on the menu there, top right-hand corner. I highlighted a couple, uh, places I think are, are interesting here in Utah County, where we've got, uh, mixed use, commercial and residential. That, uh, includes multiple units above the commercial, so, uh, Harvest Park down in Mapleton's a nice example of that. There's two shots of that, couple places in Springville where you see that, uh, particular deal. Provo River Woods has been around for quite a while on that. University Place, uh, the old mall, it's got, uh, some huge developments along that line. And we've got the cruise ship on, uh, State Street out in Orem.
Yeah, that's just what we want. Says Alpine all over it.
Uh, this, this last one there is in Pleasant Grove, it's really a nice unit. It's got four apartments up above that, uh, uh, commercial space. And ours would have two apartments up above it, again, one for my wife and I, and, uh, one for a property manager that would have, help us with the commercial part of the business. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Does anyone else have any comments on this?
Yeah, if you'd like to. But we could probably, where James is the applicant, we probably would need to, we could probably close.
Yeah, let's close it and we'll have you talk separately, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll, we will close the public hearing portion of this item. And, um, let's have the applicant come forward and, um, talk about their idea, and then we'll have discussion.
All right, Ja- James Lawrence, uh, six seventy Lupine Drive. So, uh, we've been working with the DRC and, um, some of the s- city staff to get what we could get figured out on this particular lot. It was grandfathered in, I think the ordinance came in like, was it seventy-eight, seventy-six, whatever, and that lot was established with sixty-eight or seventy. The title, the title company researched that out. So it's grandfathered in by law and we do have the easement in there. We have spoke with the fire chief, had him come out, look at the project. He's okay with getting his equipment back in there, uh, as far as public safety is concerned. So, like, like Jeff said, there, there's kind of like some, some pockets of land just sitting around that's kind of odd, right? So we're just trying to figure out something that the city would need, that'd be useful in the city, that would work with the ordinances and all that kinda stuff. And I, I don't know Jim, so I may be talking out of, out of place for Jim, but I, we're just trying to find something that would work there. So we went to Ryan, we said, hey, we want, we'd like a residence there, because residents, everybody wants some affordable living. Um, we could do some affordable living and then maybe some small, what do we call it, retail, small retail slash commercial, something. And so if you wanna pull the plans up, Ryan, if we can show you what we have put together for that. So we came to get, we came with this building design, we had the legal team look at it and say, hey, this is good, and then we had the engineer, the designers look at it and put something together that would fall within the ordinance. That would still work back in there for parking, for usage and all this kinda stuff. So this would be the main floor. Um, what are this building gonna be in, Ryan, like fifty by eighty?
Yeah.
Give or take?
Yep, you can see, right, well, you can't see that, but I can see it on my screen, it's fifty by eighty.
So you're about a four thousand square foot footprint, and, and like Ryan talked about, it would have a separate entrance for the residents upstairs. And then it would be a separate entrance for whatever the basement got rented out for, the, the main floor was rented out for. They have a little foyer slash reception office area, whatever you'd wanna call it. And then upstairs, you have an apartment, and my only comment to Ryan is the, I would, I, I think it's, I, I don't think it's accurate to say, hey, maximum square footage of X for commercial, maximum square footage of Y for residential. I think it's best to go a percentage of the building. That, that'd be my two cents off of it.
Okay.
Um, the square footage doesn't make sense in my head. And then, so one side, on the right-hand side, you would have the residential area, and then the other side would be, um, a commercial area. So it'd be a couple, couple office buildings. Honestly, there's gonna be two offices rented out up there. So one would be retained for us, for the, for the J Law stuff, and the other stuff would be.
Are you saying there's just one apartment upstairs?
Correct.
But it would not be owner occupied?
Correct.
And so there's one apartment upstairs, the rest of the building is?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Correct.
Okay.
So, with that being said, I, I've never met Jim before. If you guys wanna do something on Main Street where we could put a handful of these together, if we wanna do like a, a multi-dwelling unit. I, what are you planning on tearing that house down and starting over?
Yes.
So, I own a handful of lots down there. If the city wanted to be reasonable and work with something where we could do some affordable living or multi, I, I would work with Jim if, if the city was reasonable. Scrap this whole plan and do something else. Was it, I personally asked a hundred people what we should put in there. Everybody either said swig or affordable living. That was, that was two.
T-shirts, I thought.
No t-shirts.
That was just the best, yeah. I thought if I said swig, that's all people.
I thought they were gonna think Snow Oasis.
I didn't wanna limit, I didn't wanna limit James, you know, just.
Have a t-shirt, Shelley, we could come, we can open it up.
So, I know that it's not permitted at this point in time to do multi-dwelling units and all that kinda stuff, but if they wanna do something for that block of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Maybe me and Jim could rip some houses down together and put something up.
What do you think about, what would some of your ideas be?
For what?
Businesses?
For the commercial part.
So, we do rentals, residential and commercial stuff, and so I, I'm not the world's best, I'm not, I don't know everything, but people are just not liking to own houses, because they don't want the liability, they don't want the headache of owning it. People don't like big yards anymore. No, I, I like my space, and so I, I want my space, so I, I think it would fit if it was done right. And you could, you could give Main Street an uplift, a facelift per se, in my opinion, and you could put some affordable housing in there that's not for the, for the older people. Not fifty-five and older like everybody else is trying to propose, and get something that maybe somebody in their thirties or forties doesn't want a big house, but they wanna live up here. Let's, let's give them an option of that.
I can see that affordable housing is in demand for sure, but I'm wondering about commercial, like what height is. I can see that affordable housing is in demand for sure, but I'm wondering about commercial, like what heights do you have?
Whatever the person rents out.
They're just gonna lease it. He's not gonna.
He's gonna own the building.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. We just lease out first.
So he's gotta lease the space, so.
This is more just your, just some development for this?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so right now, this is just, yeah, for the use, right, for the ability to have a multi-use apartment that he wouldn't have to live in to do that.
So, right. And so right now, all of the things that we're talking about don't fit our ordinance. And so the question is, do we, you know, do we feel like that ordinance should be looked at? Um Ryan has some proposed ideas for it. Um personally, I think this is a pretty big discussion. Um I think it's interesting, like you said, that the possibility of of some facelift for downtown could be of interest to the city. But uh I appreciate your input. Do you have anything else that you wanted to bring up on your item?
I mean, as as far as my legal team looked at it, they, they said this building falls within the ordinance of what you guys have at this point in time.
Except that it has to be owner occupied.
Well, th- there's other examples, like the hair salon. I'm estimating it's fifty-fifty, if half residents, half. You have the Ezra Lee Building. And there's, there's other stuff that you could justify or have an argument.
The owner lives, oh, that the owner lives in?
The Ezra Lee Building, we should have that conversation.
Right, so yeah, that, and those things are enforcement problems, whether it's being, haven't handled that way or not. The hair salon, they live in that building, they live in the house. But either way, those are enforcement. That's not the way the code is written, so the code would need to be changed. So does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner here?
Both of these designs have an industrial use flair in my mind.
Okay.
You got overhead, you know.
Garage.
At least box-sized doors. Um don't, don't we prohibit industrial use?
I believe we allow for some light industrial.
It is in the Gateway Historic District, even though it's not facing the street, so we'd have to comply with any Gateway Historic, um anything that moves forward as well.
As far as those look and feel, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I need to double check, but I think we do, I think there is a, for some light industrial. So we wouldn't obviously want like a waste disposal, right? Like something like that or heavy industrial where they're, you know, building tanks or something, yeah.
Well, like a fulfillment, is a fulfillment center?
Yeah.
Uh proper use?
Which one? Say that again, sorry.
Uh electronic fulfillment center.
Fulfillment center.
It could be, potentially. We'd have to look and see with the definition of light industrial and if that would, would fit in there, but.
Yeah, my, my, my only problem with both projects is I would see a hard time with seeing how they're gonna conform to the um Historic District guidelines, design guidelines. The fact that your property is, you know, back behind everything, you know, is an interesting idea. Probably wouldn't be seen by anybody. Does that change the code or their view or interpretation of it? I don't know.
Yeah.
Are you saying, are you asking, is it still in the Historic District?
I think, I think it is.
Well, it is, it is.
It is.
It is.
But we, would we apply the same standards to this as we would anything else that runs on on Main Street?
Um which we did to the house that was built.
We did it in the house, yeah. It was in the back.
Yeah, anything that would be zoned in that, in that business commercial would fall in.
I do, personally, I think that this is a big enough issue that I think we should each do a little bit of research and read through the general plan and the Gateway Historic District and um like what, what is it that we want in the city? So prior to now, this was not allowed. So do we, do we want to change that? Do we think that's in the best interest of the city to change the ordinance to allow this? I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I think it's very interesting. And we've had many discussions about trying to revitalize Main Street and Alpine and what could be done to make it more attractive or have businesses come in if they could, um you know, things like that, but.
So, you know, just to comment, I have, I own two commercial properties, one in Orem, one in Provo. Um and I have a rental unit in the Provo, one that is not owner occupied. And I have been approached in both instances by developers who would like to expand the rental units above the business. So I know that developers are looking for this kind of an opportunity. So I do think it's, if you really wanted to change Main Street, this is the way to do it. Cause I think people are gonna be, it's, it's a lot better development proposition to come in and take out a house. If you can say, hey, I'm gonna put in two rental units that are gonna be rented all the time. And I'll have a commercial unit that is more valuable but harder to rent down below. And so it makes a pretty good prospect for a developer.
And one or the other isn't really feasible financially to just do the one or the other that makes it.
Yeah, it makes it a much harder development if you're doing the single use, so. And I, the other comment I would have is that, yeah, I don't, I don't see, I don't think you're gonna have, if you limit the height, you limit the units basically, right? You're saying, hey, if your, if your thing's two thousand, you can't go up two, three stories. You can only have one story. That's where your apartments could be. You can have one or two. That's pretty much all you can do. So to me, if you're gonna do it, you might as well allow the apartments to be two. I mean, I don't think, I don't see that one is, and and the other good thing in a commercial space.
No, it just means two apartments.
Yeah, if you have two side by side.
Not two sto- not three stories.
Yeah. And then, and you're using space that isn't being used, I mean, you know, basically, are these apartments or nighttime people using daytime space?
Yeah.
So it's kind of a good use of space.
Yeah, it's great.
So, but I, but I, but I do think we have to worry a lot about what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna affect, cause it will change. I think it would change the city quite a bit.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I mean, I didn't know Jim was coming tonight um until this afternoon when Ryan told me about it, but it's an opportunity to work with people that want to beautify the Main Street. Because I I have the most interest in Main Street here because I own the most land on Main Street here, right?
Right.
So I do have interest in Main Street. I want it to look the best. I want the most value with it for return on my dollar. It's just simple, simple. So like with Ethan saying, how about we, if you guys work with the, with me and Jim, if Jim wants to take something on, that we could build something so it doesn't look like Main Street Court, where every single building is different?
Yes.
And it, you already walks in, go, wh- what's, what's, what's going on here? That's not historic Main Street. It's, it's a hodgepodge.
Yeah, that's why I find this intriguing because I don't like that everything's different. And so if we were looking at a bigger area that conforms to our historic feeling and it's consistent, I think it would add to the historic.
It could, if it was done right.
And it would solve a bunch of things. One, it would make it easier on us if we could come to uh an agreement of what it looks like. And so then it looks like it, you know, what we want it to look like. And then it provides additional housing that's probably more affordable, provides a commercial base that adds to the city. I mean, I think it.
I do. I I do think we need to go back to the master plan though, too. Um like I, not, not saying good or bad, but, and say like, so is that vision changing? Because up until now, like a duplex or an apartment was not allowed, which is why it says owner occupied. It's the same reason why we did for the Airbnbs that you could Airbnb one room, but the owner had to live in the rest of the house. And so it's a change from what we have done in the past, is all I'm saying.
So is that, is that the main change, the owner occupied? Is that the main change that we're considering?
Yeah, that's my question. Is that, is that really the change?
Two things. Well, two things. One, the owner occupied, and the other is more than one unit. So right now, there's one. And so both of these propose two or whatever.
Yeah, so if you, if James came in right now and said, I want to do this, you know, commercial here, but I want to have an apartment for him and his family to live in, right, if he owned the building. Um it would probably fall under our accessory apartment.
Right.
Guidelines that we have. And one of those is that you can only have one, one accessory apartment per, per lot. And the other one is that it has to be owner occupied. So if you wanted to come in now, and and I'm, just pulled these up, um a- as of right now, somebody could come in and say, I want to, I want to do this. I'm just gonna live up top. The big difference is if we, if we allowed two, like Jane was saying, um and then the ability to, to rent it out to someone.
Which then brings up another question. Right now, to um have a mother-in-law apartment, you can have one, you cannot rent both levels of your house. So at that point, then, then why is that? So you can't, you have to live in one and you, right, it does.
Right, that's a different zone, right?
It is, it's a different zone. But you've got that same, that same concept that you would need to distinguish between what it is. Cause right now, the one per building is the same in commercial and residential.
You can rent your house out as a one unit.
Yeah, we can.
Kind of how I see this, right? If they want to rent it out to somebody else, I don't have an issue with it because it's like, you know, I can do it in a neighborhood, why can't I do it in a residential?
Yeah.
I feel the same way.
Well, it, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, but those are all, those are, I'm just saying all the different things that we would need to look at and consider.
Cause it's a big change, but it's so, it's so forward-thinking.
Cause it's a big change.
So Jane, so Jane, we can all go back and understand and have a good idea, refresh on the Historic District guidelines and the commercial business. But I guess at some point, James or Ja- you know, they're gonna have to say, come to us and go, this, you know, I mean.
Here's a proposed idea.
And he's kind of already done that, you know, so.
Well, I wanted.
I guess, once we ta- you know, once we go back and do homework, then, then what's the next step?
So I, I, something like this might even have a work session involved with it. Um where it's, where it's something where you, just like right now, like this forum isn't really conducive to going through all of those, exactly.
I, I agree.
So I think, I think this might need a work session. So what I would recommend that we do is that we table it and that we talk to Ryan and we talk to Jed, we talk to the mayor and the city manager and say, what do you think the best way of approaching something like this is?
And then obviously involve the Historic District Committee.
Which is us. We are.
Aren't there some other people on?
No, they used to have one. It is, it is us. That's why I'm saying, go back and reread that.
I thought there was like a separate committee.
Where are we talking for, for this area? Like if you're saying that this historic, so we're right on Main Street. We've got a lot of different.
Well, all biz- all the business commercial.
But are we gonna stop like at two hundred north? Is that kind of a cutoff? So we're talking all of Main Street?
No, uh-huh, yes.
So everything that's in red on your screen is technically in that Gateway Historic.
That's what I wanted. Thanks, Ryan.
I don't see any red on my screen.
Oh, it goes up to the peppermint factory.
It includes peppermint.
Oh, I gotta put my glasses on. See that has red around it?
It includes peppermint place.
Kind of pinkish, yeah.
Light gray.
Kind of barely red.
I was gonna say, gray with a pink tint, okay.
So, so everything that falls in that would fall under the Gateway Historic.
Yep.
Historic District.
So and, and so that's, you know, because of our experience as a council with that, like I'm saying, I think everybody needs to go reread that. Um I think personally think we need to talk about how to approach this so that we don't spend a bunch of time in the meeting as a work session where we have something, like you said, we need something to, to look at. And I think um getting input from the developers would be part of that too. Like what, what would make it, just like we did before, like we talked to people who actually ran the assisted living centers. And, and like in that item, I think we would have benefited by doing something outside as a work session before, where we tried to manage it in this meeting and I don't, I don't think that went.
Or multiple meetings.
Right. I don't, I don't think that went as well as, and we could have been more aligned from the beginning and it would have saved trouble to make sure we were all. Do you guys know what I'm talking to? Do you agree with what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, we're asking them better question. We're more.
Right, right.
I really like the idea that James has brought up.
Yeah, I do too.
Expanding it into a larger development.
I do too, cause then it's consistent.
If we're changing ordinance for just a half acre lot, I have no interest in doing that.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't serve the greater needs of the city.
I didn't know you how much you were thinking. That's what's impressive to me.
So I think, I think the only way we, we get through this is if we're talking about a larger project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I didn't know Jim was gonna be here, so I don't want to put any words in his mouth, but.
No, that's good.
Three, three things I'd like to mention before we sit down. I have been approached from the city council members saying, what, you're one of the top, what do they say, five or six tax producers in the town? For the, for tax revenue. What can we do to help you out? That was a conversation.
Yeah.
The, the second thing, cause everybody's tax revenue in the city sucks because we don't have any commercial. That's a fact, right?
Right, yeah, we, we need it, right, exactly.
The other thing that people have brought to me is uh affordable living.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's another thing. People want to live here, but they can't afford it. There's a lot of good people out there that could live here and contribute to the society and be great, but they, they just can't afford it.
Yep.
Yeah.
The third thing is, is I would say, I I've dealt with the historical committee in the past and it, you want, you want to shoot yourself when you walk out of those rooms.
I agree.
You have ten different people up there.
We want to shoot ourselves sometimes.
We feel the same way.
So, so a simple suggestion is like whoever it is, say, hey, I'll be the spearhead from your guys' point. I'll have these guys come up with the idea, one, two, and three. And then it can be presented to you guys to say, cool, this is what we're accepting, right? Because I had a project where we spent three or four meetings deciding what kind of fence to put up.
Yeah.
That's the stuff we love.
That's unprofessional and it's painful.
Was that before, was that before there was actually the document made, wasn't it?
I'm just saying it's painful.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, that was, that was.
We agree.
We agree, Jane.
So I, that's, that's the only thing I say. So you have an opportunity here to, to make Main Street something.
Yep. Is this, is the automotive shop yours?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that I'd seen, heard your name in something, but I couldn't remember what.
Yep.
So that's why, cause I was not on the planning commission at that time.
So, okay.
Thank you.
And if she wasn't, none of us were.
I was not.
Is there any more questions for me?
Nope.
So these two are both born, these two are true Alpiners, she's running these cute ones.
And I made, I made the Lambert trails with my dirt bike, so.
Hey.
Oh, man.
As long as there wasn't horses, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
Just, just real quick too, I think this is, something like this would be more what we're looking for, right?
Yes.
So you can't even tell that, I mean, with some of these, I mean, you can, you can clearly tell that.
But, but you can, but there's examples of buildings just like that in that Gateway Historic document.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are that committee, so we all should know that document inside and out.
So, and I, I think what we're going for is just so it meets the standards of a, of a commercial and, and residential, right?
Yeah, I would say something like this, like on Springville.
Something where you can see, yeah. Yeah, I didn't even know, I live in Springville, I didn't know that was an apartment.
If you look at those, you know, you basically have the same square footage upstairs and downstairs.
Yes.
It's basic, so.
Nice. Why don't you just do this hotel look?
But I do think, I do think you'd want to limit it, like fifty percent or, you know, you can do fifty percent.
I like, I like this one on Main Street. That, that would be cool.
You like the Springville one?
This one.
The one that has the.
This one or the, sorry.
Has that little gable, right? Those tall ones don't.
I just don't like something super tall.
Right, no, 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 for sure.
This is, this is probably what we wouldn't want.
No.
That's for sure.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward, cause we have two other items like this.
That was good stuff. This is good.
So we need a motion.
Oh, I'm gonna, I want, I will make it to take it.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and make it then. You gotta, you gotta.
Jane, Jane?
Yes, yes.
Can I, can I just have some brief input here?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Speak up anytime.
Sorry, Alan.
Brief.
No, no, I think you, you just, just, you may, maybe forgot I was here, but uh normally I'm a loudmouth, it's been interesting to observe. I would just tell my own perspective on this is that, that this, to me, is a fairly easy recommendation to the city council to deny at this point. And here would be my reasoning and here's why. What's before us is just basically kind of a, a, a landlocked lot that's, is it a half acre lot or, or a ten thousand square acre? Anyway, it's got ameesment to it. That's the only thing that's more or less before us right now, and they're seeking a conditional use as multi-use. I don't think that's in any way, shape or form what we would be looking for as a multi-use project. To the degree that we've seen some examples, for example, Riverwoods I'm familiar with. We saw some in Springville. We've seen some. There's a lot of these, a lot in more urban areas like Salt Lake, Park City, other places. To me, I think you've got, A, have a reasonable amount of land that you're talking about. And then B, something very aesthetic, it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing along Main Street. And I almost think that you've got to have something along the lines of, again, some decent acreage, like a, the Bangorter project or a property. Or the land just to the north of that. Something where you may have some, some condo, condos or apartments above it. Again, subject to our height restrictions, but on the lower level, the ground level, maybe you end up having, you know, an ice cream shop or a gelato shop or hair cutting or a sandwich shop, um services, uses, things that people in Al- Alpine could use. But basically with this particular lot, look, it's, it's, it, it's either a commercial use or a residential use. Um this owner can make it one or the other.
Right. So is, let's clarify that.
It can be a duplex, or it can be, or it can be, but if you're looking at multi-use, one little piece of, you know, one small building like that is really to me not what we look at a- as, I don't think that's what we want as multi-use.
Alan, Alan, let's clarify. Let's clarify something. Is what's before us an ordinance change or is what's before us his actual proposal?
Well, I think it's an ordinance, it's a gateway, right? It's an ordinance change so that he can then bring. Well, I think it's an ordinance, it's a gateway, right? It's an ordinance change so that he can then bring the potent, you know, this potential usage.
But, so what, the question is.
But we can see what the potential usage is.
Right.
So why address, why address a code change for multi-use, uh, for like, which is a gateway to, to a proposal that really isn't. I, I think what we're looking, at least for me, not what I would be looking at spending the time and effort to even, uh, amend the code for multi-use.
So, but the idea is that.
If something came before us, if, if something came before us that, that was, that was, look, the, the project was much more, I think, uh, you know, for example, if these two gentlemen combine forces and come back and it's, it's a larger piece of property and it's, and it's a project that's more conducive to actually, you know, what we might want to consider as a multi-use project in Alpine, I just don't think that, that what we're looking at is it.
Right. Okay, so the kind of question really of what you're proposing is, should we even look at the ordinance change until something we would actually want is proposed to us? Um, on the flip side, would they want to go to the effort of proposing something if we weren't gonna change the ordinance? So, um, we could do two things. To your point, we could deny what is here. That doesn't mean we don't do it going forward, but we just start over again with an ordinance and, and just deny this one. Or we can table this one and say, well, we might be interested in ordinance change, but we're not ready to do it now. So, um, I, I get, I get what you're saying, Alan, so we don't.
I don't see, I don't see this particular proposal before us as the one that, that, that we would be particularly interested in as a city for an aesthetic that, that in the Gateway Historic District, in the commercial zone, because what's proposed isn't, you know, I think what we would even be looking at for a, a multi-use project. So if it's not before us, then why are we looking at, at amending our, our code, our ordinance?
Okay. Um, so I think that's just kind of another way of getting to the same result. But I think that, that's a valid point, that maybe it's better that we just deny this until we get to the point where we have something more viable. From your point of view, Ryan, does it make any difference in the end?
If, if this is something we'd like to go down, we gotta remember that this, this code amendment will apply to all that commercial zone, right? So if this is something we'd still like to, to pursue, we think it's worth it, we think it's, you know, could, could, like we talked about, bring, uh, more affordable housing. I won't say more affordable because some of these are still going for what I pay for a house.
Well, we're not really sure, like, we just wanna explore that.
Yep, so I would, I would say instead of, of starting at ground zero where we're gonna probably end up looking at it again, I think tabling it would be a better, a better use of that. If this is something we'd like to look at further going forward. If it's just a no, we're not interested in this period, then, then obviously the, you have the right to recommend denying it to the city council.
Right.
But if it's something you'd like to continue looking at or, or study out further, then I would say, let's look at, let's look at tabling it again, mainly so we don't have to do another public hearing. This one was pretty, pretty raucous, so.
Yeah.
Um, but, but we, if we did deny it, then we'd have to open it back up for, which isn't a big deal.
No.
I'm just saying, we would, we would need to go through that process again.
I would.
What do you think?
Were you, were you in the middle of making a motion?
No, I said, what do you think?
I, I think that we oughta deny it, uh, with the understanding that we want to see a, a solid proposal that would be much larger in scope. That would consider the historical district. And then we would know what factors we would want to include in an ordinance that would allow that kind of a project.
Okay.
Yeah, and again with that too, if we did, if you did recommend to deny it, it would go to city council and they would, they would sell the opportunity to look at it. They could, they could approve it and say, that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, that's, that's their prerogative.
If, if you'd like to still study it out, again, I would, I would recommend, uh, not denying it, that would just, I would just say table it if you want.
Well, yeah, table it. But if we deny it, they don't necessarily have to go to city council. They can, they can say, okay, well, since they denied it, we're not gonna go to city council. We're gonna work together for a while first before we bring a new one forward.
True.
And I would almost feel better about having another, uh, public hearing than, especially with a change, if we're gonna do some multi-property along there.
I, I would agree.
So, um, anyway, still, so I think anybody can make a motion still. I think either one of them could work. But I, I could see the value in, in starting again. So, does someone wanna make a motion?
Before a motion's made too, uh, one thing to include in there is, uh, and, or who the land use authority was gonna be on these, if, if, if they did. Just make a recommendation that either be you or the, or the city council, that would be the land use authority.
Explain that. I don't know what you mean by that.
Yeah, so, so the land use authority, who, who's the final say on, on these different uses that we've got? So if, if this was, if this was a use, uh, conditional use, you would see who would be, so there's some that you guys, like the fruit stand, you guys are the produce stand. You guys are the approving body on that, the land use authority. Um, on other ones, it's the city council. On some, it's the city staff.
I think this would be a city council.
So, yeah, I would.
So, so we're just recommending denying it?
Yeah, yep. And, and, but I would just include.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
That they be the, you know, that you include who the recommending, or who the approving body is.
Okay.
Can you bring up the title of this?
That's not the right one.
Sorry.
I mean, I'd definitely like to explore it more, so, whatever we do. Fire away, Sue or John?
I think John will add things. He, John, you go.
Uh, I move to not recommend approval of the proposed code text amendment to section three dot zero seven dot three, zero, three, zero. Conditional uses allowing mixed use development as a conditional use in the business commercial zone. Until, uh, we can have greater info, or greater detail on a larger, uh, project that would incorporate similar features that we can then use to determine if an ordinance change or what the ordinance changes, uh, would be best suited.
Okay, we have a motion by John McKay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Alan McDonald. Any discussion on the motion?
Do you wanna add? City council?
Yeah.
Um, should we?
I mean, we're recommending not approval to the city council.
I mean, yeah, exactly. So we're recommending not approval, so I don't think you say who the record, who the body is until you pass code.
Yeah.
They, they, again, though, they could, they could approve it. And so some part of your language could be, i- if approved, then we would recommend, uh, the, the city council be the recommending body.
Okay.
But you don't, you don't have to. If you just recommend to deny it and they, they wanna discuss that, then that's.
They can figure it out.
Okay.
No, that's fine too, yep.
Yep, I, I agree.
Any other discussion?
So do we wanna deny it or table it? Do you all feel so?
He said not recommend.
So right now, this is, yeah, that right now this is, mm-hmm. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? Okay. Ethan is opposed. Anybody else opposed?
I think I'm opposed.
Okay. Sues is opposed, Ethan is opposed.
You know what? Can I add mine to that too? Yeah, cause I, yeah.
You wanna be opposed too?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a revote.
Let's do a revote.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so that is John McKay, Alan McDonald, Jeff Davis, Jane Greiner. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, opposed is Troy Slade, Ethan Allen, and Sue Whittenburg. So either way, we want to further the discussion. We don't want it to end today. We want to further a discussion on it.
Yeah, so it'll, you can still go to.
You can decide to go to city council, get their opinion, or we can do some work together and then come back. Okay.
It didn't, but the motion passes.
The motion passes. Mm-hmm. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Um, so this is just to continue with our discussion that we've been having about, um, the density in the assisted living and nursing care overlay zone. Um, we met on March twenty first to go over it, kinda had a base, uh.
Thanks.
Conversation.
Look forward to talking to you again.
So, uh, March twenty first is when we first started this. Wanted to kinda clarify some, some of the, the density standards that we had. Uh, the feeling was that the one, one person, one resident per one thousand square feet didn't work in all situations. Uh, so we were, we asked to, to take a look at that. Uh, we had discussed it again last time, uh, April eighteenth. Where we went over, you know, market research that we had done and, and different standards and different things there. Um, and, and we separated the, the senior housing, uh, congregate living, uh, and the, and the, uh, assisted living, uh, standards that we would have there. Uh, the takeaway from that was that we needed to look at making sure that if a development came in that wanted to do this, that they, uh, included some assisted living. So it wasn't just a, an all, uh, concrete or independent living. Is, concrete living's what our code says. I've learned and been educated that, uh, independent living is the, the, uh, standard.
The standard name for it.
Yep. Um, but that's not what we're talking about, so we'll get to that later. But, uh, that was the, the homework that we were given and, and the takeaways to go look and see what we could do, um, to, to make sure that was required there. Uh, as you can see, this is still the homework from, from last time that we had. Um, I've had follow-up conversations with, uh, those in the, the development community that, that do this for a living. They run these and develop these. Um, ran through what we had so far. Uh, both of them said they, they thought that was fair. They thought that was attractive to them if they, if they wanted to come in and, and do something in the community. Um, they, they both thought it was a fair and kinda industry standard for what we had so far. Um, in conversations I had, sorry to make everyone carsick here, uh, this point, C is kinda what we've, what we've added and what we've been talking, talking about. Um, in, in those conversations and the, the market, uh, you know, what the market would prefer, what these developers look for, um, they, they prefer the, the standard or the preferences of more assisted living. Because, and, and just to be frank, they can charge more for assisted living. So they, with, with more care and more, uh, services provided there, they said if, uh, in, in most cases, unless you're, you know, that's all you wanna do is independent living. They said in most cases, uh, you'll have more, uh, assisted living. Um, they said most of these that they try to do, they try to have thirty percent of it is the independent living. And then seventy percent is the, the assisted living. Just, again, just because it, it costs, or they can, they can charge more, yeah.
Profitable, yeah.
Yeah. Um, interesting conversation I had with them too. Uh, they said in, in most cases, they don't have separate, there are some that do this. You know, they have building A is, is independent living and building B would be assisted living. They said a lot of times they're, they're combined into one, you know, one.
Building.
Yeah, so they're, they're not there and they just have, you know, rooms one through fifty is a assisted living and, or even kinda scattered throughout. So they said that there's, but then there are some that just have them strictly, you know, building A is assisted living and building B is independent. They said that, that's a model two, but there were, there were a few that did that. Um, and, and again, looking through this and doing some research in the conversations I've had with them. Um, I, I went with a percentage instead of saying, you know, at least sixty units have to be assisted living.
Mm-hmm.
Happy we can make that change. It, it was about sixes either way on what they did with that. I thought with going with the percentage.
Depends on how many square, or how many acres they have though.
Yep, yep. So, so in the, in the percentage, uh, if they could get, you know, total, they could get a certain amount. Um, we're saying whatever your total amount, you could get at least more than half. Um, well, over half, sixty percent would need to be assisted living. If you want more independent concrete living, uh, we've got a whole other zone that you can, you can go for there.
Right.
We did up this, as you can see, the concrete or independent living, uh, the maximum number of dwelling units per acre, we had eight. We said we'd be willing to do up to ten.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, not to exceed forty units. Again, conversations with those in the, in the development world that do this, thought that was a fair, a fair, uh, number there. So, uh, with that, again, uh, we've discussed this a couple of times. Uh, that was the big takeaway last time we wanted to look at. Open to questions or any, any other comments that anyone has.
So, can you physically put a hundred and twenty units on an acre?
No, no, no. Re below. So you have to have a maximum of thirty units per acre.
Not to exceed a hundred and twenty.
Not to exceed a hundred and twenty units, but you have to, would have to have four acres to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so thirty units per acre. And then you have to have a minimum of two acres to even start.
Mm-hmm.
And a maximum of four acres. So it keeps the size.
And they said. An exception for ten acres.
And, uh-huh, yeah. And then it gives them a slight incentive, like if they do want to have, if they're willing, you know, if they are doing this, it gives them a slight incentive um, to have some independent living, so they could have ten per acre. So you could have sixty on two acres and then, say you have three acres, you could have sixty assisted and you could have ten independent, cause you'd have three acres. As long as that is still sixty percent minimum of that has to be assisted. So you can't go too big on the independent.
Sure.
Okay.
We were just, again, trying to limit those bigger, bigger. And again, compared to what we used to do, we used to have one resident, we did it by residents instead of units. I can't remember if I read this or if, if one of the developers told us this, but they said about eighty, seventy to eighty percent of these are, are single.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's better to go by units, cause that's your space, not residence.
Yeah. We could have, in, in the way our code's written, you could have up to three people in one. You could have, you can have one non, we call it non-qualifying residents, so someone that's under five that, you know, if they had a kid that lived with them or, or something like that, so.
Share for them or whatever, yeah.
Yep.
I like this. Um, I think, I think it accomplished what I was thinking of anyway. Um, I saw something else that was that they had to be owned. We, we had that in the code, that they can't sell these. This has to be rented.
They had to be rented, yeah.
They can't sell the individual units and have people own them like condos.
Yeah.
It has to be rented.
One day I'll get there. But, yeah. And, and that was, that was an ad that we had from, from two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's good work.
So the owner controls and manages.
I do, I feel good. I know, from where we started, this ended up in a good place. This, this fits.
I like it.
Okay. Um, anything else? Now, this is a, we've already done a public hearing on it. There's no public hearing for this.
And, and again, legislative decision, as, as the last one was, we're amending the code. So what we're looking at is if it meets the standards in the, in, you know, our policy that we have in the general plan and then, uh, our standards in the codes.
Do we think this is best for the city of Alpine, basically? If you don't think this is good for the city of Alpine, you can vote against it for no reason. You're not applying any kinda code or any ordinance to it.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? I think we've talked about it a lot. We just wanted to really have that worded nicely for us. Give us a week to think about it. Alan, do you have any questions or comments? Nope, okay.
No.
Okay. Then if not, let's get a proposal or a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion if you put that up there, Ryan.
Don't tell Heidi I said this, she makes this run a lot sooner.
I'm gonna tell her.
There we go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend the approval of the proposed code check, code text amendment changes. Changing the language in section three point one nine point zero seven zero, reducing the density standards in the assisted living and nursing care overlay to the following.
Just like as written?
As written.
As proposed, yeah.
Yeah, as proposed.
Okay, we have a motion by Jeff Davis. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Sue Whittenburg. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimously passes. Okay, um, we're on to communications. Is that right, or was there one more?
Nope, that's it. So we, we had one originally, another code amendment, uh, to allow reception centers.
Yeah.
But it, it got pulled by the advocate the last, I think it was like Friday afternoon, then.
Okay.
That's good.
Health issues, so.
That was the one I was the most worried about.
Yeah.
That's why you came tonight?
That's the main reason.
Okay, great. So communication? Any communication?
Yeah, just, just a couple. Um, we've talked about trainings. Uh, the state law requires that we're going, that the planning commission to have so many hours of training. Um, I think everyone came to the one we did in January, so we only need three. I think everyone came to the one we did in January, so we only need three hours left. Before it gets too crazy, we've kinda broken it up into quarters, right, to see, um, if, if we don't have, I didn't receive any app, so today's the deadline to, um, be on the agenda for the sixteenth. I didn't receive any that we've got, um, so far. We might get, you know, a code text amendment request from some, somewhere in the city that we could clean up. That would have to go out by Friday, um, that we'd have to do that. Is the sixteenth, we could do another one of these, there's also, or another training that we've got. We would just need to line that up with, with topics that we'd wanna go over. And then, um, our other option is, and obviously, uh, I, I sent this out to Utah Land Use Institute, uh, it's a, it's really cool, if you ever get bored and wanna go look at their, their website, it's ran by the guy that was the first property rights ombudsman for the attorney for the city of Utah. He runs this, him and a guy that was the planning director for Salt Lake and Davis County.
He, he used to come and do trainings around cities, didn't he?
Yeah, he still does.
Cause I think he came and did a training for us before.
Yep, yep, so they, they had their, uh, spring conference, the beginning of April. And they did a, they do these land use powers and, and it's a, I think total it's about four hours. They've recorded those in two, I guess it's three hours, two hour and a half videos.
Okay.
We could, we could watch that individually, uh, the state doesn't have a way to monitor this, so I'm not saying lie about this, but, uh, you would just need to let us know that you, you've watched that, we could watch it on our own and not meet next time, or if you'd rather-
I would like that, actually, I'd like to watch their video, if it's got good content and, and done well, he did a really great job before. I'm okay with watching on our own, on our system.
The ones that's on it now is Craig Hall, he's the attorney, uh, Jordan Cullmore, he's the current property rights ombudsman, and then Will Summercorn is, and he was the, um, uh, community development director for Salt Lake at one point in Davis County, so they're ton of experience, ton of knowledge there, um, I can send those out, they're just on YouTube.
Yeah, let's do those, and then if nothing comes up, we'll, we'll cancel, if something comes up, we can have a quick meeting, but I'm okay with that, you guys like that?
I'm good with that.
That works. Um, and then my other one that I was just gonna bring up is the state legislative session ended back in March, but we're seeing a lot of the, the bills that are, need to be looked at and, and passed to do that, so, uh, over the next, probably up until next session, we'll probably have portions of, of code amendments that need to be made.
Where we have to update it to match what they did, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we had one originally, a public hearing one that they, they amended, but after reviewing it and then looking at our code, there wasn't any changes that needed to be made, so, just a heads up, and if you have any questions about any of the, the bills that came up, we'd be happy to, to look at those and go over them.
Okay.
Interested, I wasn't able to watch, um, city council last week, I was wondering, how did things go with our state senator, Mike Kennedy? Did anybody come to that, or did you?
Yeah, so it was, it was-
What did he address?
Really informative, it was mostly questions from the city council, um, he kinda talked about his philosophy as far as, you know, returning power and authority back to the cities and, and letting them kinda make these decisions, and most of them were just questions along that, that line of thinking, you know, how would you, and, and that was kind of his-
Can we get some of those notes?
Yeah.
You know, how you've sent us some of that.
Yeah, we've got the minutes of it and, um, it's a YouTube, it's on YouTube.
You can watch it on YouTube.
I can go back and watch it.
Yeah, you can go back and watch it.
We could, we could look at making a clip of it.
Unfortunately, they're permanently out there for us.
Yeah.
If you wanna watch yourself.
Yep.
I'll just take care of that on my-
So I can, I can send out the meeting minutes if you'd like to.
I should just watch it.
Yeah.
So where, where are we with Cherry Hill Farms in the hurricane?
Yeah, so that one, that one went through the city council, they did, uh, recommend, uh, not requiring it to be asphalt. So they're, they, they still have to meet compliance with ADA standards and all that, all that stuff.
So they basically approved what we passed on.
Okay.
So they tore down the house.
They did also approve, cause remember how we had, they had parking going into the front setback? Um, that was part of the exception that they, that they recommended that, that be allowed to do that as well.
So they, they were okay with them, um, having the parking going into that thirty feet zone?
Yep, and it wasn't, it wasn't-
Which is fine, okay, give them more orchard, I don't-
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, cool.
They have a pro, a proposed opening date.
I haven't heard yet.
They tore down the house, they've got a revision.
Well, the house is lawn, but they still just have a foundation with nothing poured, so.
So they'll just have the sound they share, I'm sure.
Well, in talking with, with Derek Rowley, the guy that, that runs it, um, it's, it's, he kept calling it Lincoln log, I mean, they, they, the building shipped to them and they just, I mean, as, not as is, but they just kinda-
Oh, that's what it is, it's a prefab kind of thing. Okay, and then they've gotta get Bateman Lane, though.
Yeah, that was one of the things they have to widen that.
So that's the biggest thing, is Bateman Lane has to be done, even if they use that little building, they have to access it from Bateman Lane, so.
To widen it there, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, eventually, we will have fruit. Can I just say something bizarre? My peach trees have blossomed finally, I have not seen one bee in my yard.
Yeah.
Go look, I know, I'm serious.
The wasps all came out yesterday.
Have you seen some wasps? Okay, cause I, I, my fruit trees finally bloomed and there has not been a single bee buzzing in my yard. I thought that was so strange.
I think they're just delayed.
I know, I'm gonna call Print and Fraser down, he does honey, and tell him to bring his bees into my yard for a day.
Get busy.
Do you know if the orchard, do they ever talk to the UDOT about painting that red, that curb? I haven't heard, I haven't heard yet.
One thing about it, I got thinking that I'm less worried because I forgot that their entrance won't be over there. So it's highly unlikely anybody's gonna park, because that entrance is a long way down and around the corner.
It's a pretty steep.
Yeah, and it's gonna steep, so I-
I want a red.
No, but, but-
It's, it's gonna be great, they do have to go.
But they do have to go a long way, so I'm not as worried about that as I was, I was thinking it was closer to where they were to where the entrance is, so.
So, I, I have a question from my neighborhood.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We have a, we have a property owner who lives in Highland, who bought the house behind him, which is an Alpine. And he is taking most of the lot from the Alpine house and incorporating it into his Highland house. Is that, is that something he can do? And then I think he's gonna rent the Alpine house.
No, he has to, he would have to, you can't have a, a house cross a property line. So unless he went to the city and combined those into one lot, he could not do that.
Which he did not do.
Which would, which would be interesting, where there's two cities involved.
Then has he gotten approval?
So he-
Property lines can cross city boundaries, but the structure can't.
Yeah.
The house doesn't, he, he, he put his house all the way to the back of Highland. And then-
But then that doesn't meet the setback.
But then he didn't have, he didn't have, he, I think he has the setback, the fifteen feet or whatever. But then he bought the house behind him, which had an acre lot.
Right.
And he took most of the acre for the yard for the house in Highland, in Highland.
Interesting, as long as the property lines, if you still met our-
That's legal.
And is he renting the other house?
And then he's, he's also challenging the fence line of all of his neighbors.
Oh, interesting.
That has been there for thirty or forty years, I thought that, isn't that, isn't a fence line established after a certain amount of time?
I think so, yeah, I don't remember what the, the amount of time is, but seven years is that. Common law marriage, yeah.
Is that true? Yeah, but you need to take them to court and say-
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, good luck.
By virtue of the seven-year rule, I am declaring this my property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Golf, golf carts?
Uh, yeah, so there's lots of comments about golf carts around town, it's come up every year.
That was big on the-
It's a matter of the police patrolling it, I don't know that there's anything we do, but go to the police and ask for them to patrol it more, more education, put it out in the city, the city, have the police, um, department write an article for the city newsletter, um, it, it's, it's, it's illegal, they're not street-approved, they're not, they're not sidewalk-approved, um, they're illegal.
I mean, in another city, somebody died this week.
So, I don't know, I, I've been the bad mom on that one for years, I didn't let people ride home from young men, young women's in it, and everybody hated me for it, so I'll leave it at that.
I'm, I'm more annoyed by these little electric bicycles. They're, they're now making them small and kinda a-
They'll go to fifty.
Yeah, yeah, they've gotta ride their bikes. Yeah, they have to, they have to be like a bike.
They're doing, you know, stunts off of the curbs, flying in front of you as a drive down the road.
Well, and they're driving, you know how you, if you're riding your bike, you'd have to be like a car.
You'd either follow the bike rules.
Be like a car.
Yes, exactly, so.
So they're coming along the other way.
Right, so.
And they're flying down there, I've just been like, whoa, my gosh, now I know I'm getting old, though, because I see all the-
All right, let's, let's-
Like, that's fun.
That's true.
Some of them.
These kids are.
They do.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're, they're driving at night, and they have nice big headlights, but their taillights aren't very good.
But they're not a motorcycle, they're not street, they're not, they're a bike.
I, I know that, that golf cart thing exploded on the-
Oh, yeah.
The Alpine webpage, community page, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody was kicked off and somebody was mad.
Okay, let's, let's, okay, let's go to, um, the minutes. I read through them, I thought they were fine, anybody else have any comments about them? I need a proposal, I need a motion.
What do you, I'll make a motion to, I motion to approve the minutes of April eighteenth.
As written?
As written.
Okay, we have a motion by Troy Slade.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Ethan Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We need a motion to dismiss.